To begin, meeting number two this evening, we are about to begin. So if you could take your seats, please. Okay, well, yeah. And we will begin with a call to order, which we just did. And we're going to have the swearing in of our newly elected officials by Judge Michael Wolf. Judge, thank you for coming this evening. We'll do it in this order. We'll do clerk, treasurer, alderman, and one, two, three, four, and then the mayor last. Okay? And all of you have seen this before, and some have participated before, so I think you know what the drill is. We're going to do it right up here. Any family members that wish to join the people that are being sworn in are welcome to come up and join the photograph. We'll try to get some photographs to get them out to memorialize tonight. So let's do it.
Emily's first.
Anyone who wants to take pictures, please come up. Okay, ready? Okay, raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Emily Larson.
Having been elected to the office of city clerk.
Having been elected to the office of city clerk.
In the city of Warrenville.
In the city of Warrenville.
In the county of DuPage.
In the county of DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of city clerk of the city of Warrenville.
Of city clerk of the city of Warrenville.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Afterwards?
You've signed it, yeah, we'll sign it afterwards.
Very good. Larry, come up. How are you? I state your name.
I, Larry Brenner.
Having been elected.
Having been elected.
To the office of city treasurer.
To the office of city treasurer.
In the city of Warrenville.
In the city of Warrenville.
In the county of DuPage.
In the county of DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of city treasurer of the city of Warrenville.
Of city treasurer of the city of Warrenville.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Fred Bavir? I'm pronouncing that right.
Bavir, yes.
Okay. I state your name.
I, Fred Bavir.
Having been elected.
Having been elected.
To the office of Ward One Alderman.
To the office of Ward One Alderman.
In the city of Warrenville.
In the city of Warrenville.
In the county of DuPage.
In the county of DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I'll faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Ward One Alderman.
Of Ward One Alderman.
Of the city of Warrenville.
Of the city of Warrenville.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. William Widener? Do you want to sign later?
Later.
I state your name.
I, William Widener.
Having been elected.
Having been elected.
To the office of Ward Two Alderman.
To the office of Ward Two Alderman.
In the city of Warrenville.
In the city of Warrenville.
In the county of DuPage.
In the county of DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Ward Two Alderman of the city of Warrenville.
Of the office of Ward Two Alderman of the city of Warrenville.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Kathryn Davalos? I state your name.
I, Kathryn Davalos.
Having been elected.
Having been elected.
To the office of Ward Three Alderman.
To the office of Ward Three Alderman.
In the city of Warrenville.
In the city of Warrenville.
In the county of DuPage.
In the county of DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of Ward Three Alderman.
The duties of the office of Ward Three Alderman.
Of the city of Warrenville.
Of the city of Warrenville.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations. I state your name.
I, Claire Berry.
Having been elected to the office of Ward Four Alderman.
Having been elected to the office of Ward Four Alderman.
In the city of Warrenville.
In the city of Warrenville.
In the county of DuPage.
In the county of DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Ward Four Alderman.
Of the office of Ward Four Alderman.
Of the city of Warrenville.
Of the city of Warrenville.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Again, congratulations.
Thank you.
I state your name.
I, David Bremel.
Having been elected to the office of mayor.
Having been elected to the office of mayor.
In the city of Warrenville.
In the city of Warrenville.
In the county of DuPage.
In the county of DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
Of mayor of the city of Warrenville.
Of mayor of the city of Warrenville.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Thank you. Whoa. That was good. Déjà vu all over again here tonight. Are we ready? Let's get started. That was exhilarating. It's good to be back. May I have a roll call, please, for the new council and new elected officials?
Newly elected. All right. Alderman Ashauer.
Here.
Alderman Berry.
Here.
Alderman Bavir.
Here.
Alderman Davalos.
Here.
Alderman Goodman.
Here.
Alderman Hoffman.
Here.
Alderman Widener.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Thank you, Emily. Would you please stand as you are enabled and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I see no citizens' comments for this meeting either. Official and staff comments, I would just say that it's good to be back, and I think everyone's intention up here is to work as hard as we have been working the last few years to make Warrenville a better place. That's why we're here. It's what we really want to do, and I feel free to speak for everyone, that we may not agree on everything, but we're trying to do our best for our community. And I would take comments from the Alderman. Alderman Goodman.
Yes, I just want to really welcome our new city treasurer, Larry Brenner, whom I've known for several years, and I am absolutely certain that he's going to be an asset to our community in his new role, and I look forward to working with him.
Okay, then we'll go back to the order that we had to begin with. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Another four years. I'm looking forward to it. I will say, this is a formal announcement, it's the last four years. It's time for somebody else to start a career, because at the end of four years, it'll be 20 years, and that's a good length for a career. So anybody who's out there wants to know anything about the job, please give me a call, talk to Alma, and we'll let you know what it is. It's a good job, and it's good to serve the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. And now for the first time, treasurer, Larry, welcome.
An honor and a privilege. I thank you all.
Welcome aboard. I'm sure you're going to do a fine job, Larry. Any other alderman comments? All right, seeing none, administrator?
Congratulations, everyone. Nothing else to add tonight.
Thank you, John. An attorney?
And I would just echo the administrator's comments. I just look forward to working with the new council. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, David. Now approval of the agenda, then, for the second meeting this evening. Agenda number two, Alderman Widener.
I move to approve the agenda two for the May 1st, 2017 City Council regular meeting.
Second.
Second by Alderman Davalos. Any discussion of that agenda? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. We have no minutes to approve consent agenda for this evening. Read as follows. Item 6A, accept Mayor Bremel's recommendation and appoint Alderman Goodman as the chairman and Alderman Ashauer as the vice chairman of, for the Finance and Public Safety Committee of the whole. B, accept Mayor Bremel's recommendation and appoint Alderman Berry as chairman and Alderman Bavir as the vice chairman of the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee of the whole. And C, approve the Aldermanic Liaison assignments per the attached City of Warrenville City Council Committees and Aldermanic Liaison Assignments list dated May 1st, 2017. Motion, Alderman Widener.
Move to approve the agenda as presented by Mayor David Bremel.
Second.
Second by Alderman Davalos. Any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Hoffman.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Bavir.
Aye.
Alderman Berry.
Aye.
Alderman Goodman.
Aye.
Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Alderman Widener.
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer.
Aye.
Thank you, Emily. We have one item under the regular agenda. Would someone like to bring that forward? Oh, after closed session? Okay. All right, so we're not going to talk about that right now. We're going to enter into executive session. For the purpose of discussion of the citation given by Alderman Berry.
Like to make a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of 5 ILCS 120/2, print C, print five, the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the public body, including meetings held for the purpose of discussing whether a particular parcel should be acquired.
Second.
Motion and a second. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Ashauer.
Aye.
Alderman Goodman.
Aye.
Alderman Widener.
Aye.
Alderman Bavir.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Berry.
Aye.
Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Alderman Hoffman.
Aye.
Thank you, Emily. We will clearly be transacting some business after the closed session, so if you wish to stay for that, you're welcome to stay. We will now go into closed session.
Larry, we should stay. We should stay until we come out.